July to order. I believe there are going to be a few little changes as we go down through the agenda, and I will check them off as we go through it. Could I hear a motion to accept Art's meeting notes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I don't believe we have any minutes tonight. Alrighty. Correspondence on non-agenda items, I don't think there's anything along those lines. And our first public hearing is at 6:33. And are people from Core Group here? Oh, alright, Warren. I was wondering why you were here tonight. You have three minutes to prepare your presentation. Does anyone have anything we could do in the interim?
Nope. There's nothing.
Okay. I will read the announcements. Okay. Core Group Properties LLC, Middle Road at 34 through 55 Pitcher Lane, Site Plan. Conduct a public hearing on an application for site plan approval in the matter of a modified site plan for the greenhouse at Rhinebeck special event venue, as heretofore authorized by special use permit within the ORP district incorporating the addition of a deck and accessible restroom facility, the modified site plan superseding the site plan subject to the planning board's resolution of October 21st, 2013, being an unlisted action under secret. Okay, Warren.
Good evening, I'm Warren Smith representing the Core Group Properties LLC, Dan and Lisa Rizzo, proprietors. This project is one familiar to the board because the Rizzos had to go through a rezoning to be able to use the barn that was in the property where the Pitchers used to sell amenities for a events, small event space, up to 100 people. And we were involved a few years ago as they went through the initial improvements to the building to make it possible for that. Once they went through the planning and zoning process and made the whole event barn legal entity, they had to have approved SDS from the Health Department, and that's taken a while. As it happens, I believe their previous approval from this board expired. They are back really to sort of reauthorize that approval with a modest change or addition to the building, which I'll mention in a moment. I will tell you that the SDS plans have been conceptually approved by the Health Department. They are there waiting for a final signature, but the project engineer, Dan Wheeler, has been in contact with the Health Department, and they basically have to do their final review and stamp it. But that shouldn't be a problem with the contingency expiring again this time. The substance of this application are two very modest additions to the building. An effort to create two ADA accessible restrooms in the building. Right now, there's one that's not quite accessible. We're putting a little piece on the main level. We'll have no additional coverage of ground just for supporting it, but that will allow us to convert one restroom to an accessible restroom and then create another one. So there'll be two on the floor of the space that's actually used for events. And then, just for a little breakout space, a nice weather space, there's a deck shown in the back that spans an existing driveway and has stairs to grade. There's no intent to increase the capacity of the barn, it's still the interior capacity, which is limited to less than 100 people, and that's, there's no change to their planned occupancy, the structure, but it's these two additions, about 94 square feet of restrooms, and then 300 square feet of a deck on the west side of the building. And that's the substance of what I'm presenting, the site plan by Dan Wheeler, I highlighted in yellow, those two minor additions to that barn. And again, he has worked out both the public water supply and the actual disposal requirements with the Health Department, and has pending final approval on both of those.
And the other aspects of the site plan are basically what we already approved, so there's no change in terms of parking and all that. Okay, very good. Who did the site visit?
Bob and I did.
Okay, would you like to report on what you found?
Um, didn't really see, we saw where the deck was going. There's an existing window there, so it wasn't going to be, or it was, I guess, like a full-size window, it almost looked like a door, so that's a door. Didn't see any issue with that, and to bump out from the bathrooms, I didn't see an issue with that either.
Questions from members of the board? Members of the public, comment, questions? Yes?
Can I add?
Yes, oh please do, and we'll ask you to identify yourself and then use the microphone, and you'll be on camera.
My name is Tom Salmon, I'm a resident of Rhinebeck, and I'm accompanied by two of my neighbors who are equally concerned about the environmental impact that this might have on us. We live in Forest Park, which is contiguous to the properties that are being considered here tonight. We're concerned about noise pollution and other environmental negative impacts that might result of your condoning this. We would not have known about this meeting tonight except one of the ladies had passed by the property a day or two ago and noticed that there was a sign alluding to this meeting here tonight, so that's why we are here. And may I ask, is there anybody else in the audience here tonight who is here for this particular purpose? Okay. Nobody else knew about this. We live in Forest Park, there are approximately 120 families there, and a lot of us are right near the property being considered. So I don't really know what our rights are, but I'm here to find out from the board what they are. Can you help me with that? Can you help the ladies with that?
Well, your rights are still need to comment, bring up concerns. This project was earlier a subject of a special use permit and site plan approval for the event center about a year ago maybe, something like that. And we went through the secret process, we went through the hearing process, and it was approved, both the special use permit and the site plan, although before we could stamp and sign the final plans, they had to come up with a proper sewage disposal system and restrooms, which is what tonight's discussion is about. Basically, it's that amendment to the approved site plan.
Has the issue of noise pollution been addressed?
We addressed it during the earlier hearing, yes.
And what was the outcome of that, may I ask?
What's going to be happening will be inside the building. We, as I understand, there's not going to be any electric--
Tents in the front yard.
Right, tents in the front yard. My understanding was there's not going to be any amplification outside of speakers, things like that, as I recall. I don't recall what the other concerns were. As you point out, there was, no one came here raising concerns. The people who live adjacent to the property immediately had no objection to it, so--
Perhaps because it was poorly advertised?
Well, it was advertised according, both in the newspapers, the sign was placed out in front during that hearing period, plus I believe the law requires, is it 500, within 500 feet of the property? All those neighbors were indeed notified, and that's what the law requires.
Has there been a study done specifically with respect to the noise pollution, which I think is our main concern?
There was not a specific noise study done because of the constraints that the applicant was placing on with how the property was going to be used, that there was not going to be any outdoor amplification, things of that of noise, therefore, and since the neighbors who did come before us had no objections or issues about noise, anything like that, we didn't pursue it further than that, no.
Perhaps this chairman, could you define special events? What might that entail?
Relatively small receptions, could be a wedding, could be a reunion party, you know, a private party of some sort, honoring someone's anniversary or birthday, but again, limited by the facility here, 200, 100 people.
Those are less specific terms, can you define them more specifically? You say small, would that be, to me, 25 people or less would be small, to somebody else, 300?
Right, well, indicated-- They don't have the amendment, right?
What?
The town board's amendment?
I don't have--
Apparently that's how it's defined.
But there is, the town does have a noise ordinance, and I believe the decibel limit is 50 decibels at the property line during, from I think 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and, no, 60 decibels, and then 50 decibels from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So this project and this, any event taking place there has to meet those, that noise ordinance, it cannot be any noisier than that. And if you do suspect that there is excessive noise coming, you just need to report it because we do have a couple people in the police department who are skilled at using the noise meter thing to go to the edge of the property and actually determine whether or not they are exceeding the noise ordinance.
The noise is from 7:00 PM to 8:00 AM?
I believe it is from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM is 60 decibels, and I believe from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM it is 50 decibels. At the property line, that means at their property line, not yours, at their property line. So theoretically, it should be a lot less by the time it gets to yours.
Just, just so everyone understands, this is on Pitcher Road, and Middle Road comes out to 9G. Forest Park, as I understand, is down here where 9G and 199 meet?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're not an immediately contiguous neighbor. Everyone within the required distance got a mail notification in addition to the newspaper notice and the sign.
Or the back of the property, Forest Park, this?
The back of this property?
I imagine it's probably the Pitcher's property. This was a small portion carved out of the Pitcher's property. The Pitchers still own the remainder of that. This is, how many acres is this?
Small.
25?
It's not.
Right, all the surrounding properties still Pitcher. This particular parcel was 7.468 acres?
Yeah.
I don't believe this is contiguous of any part.
No, it's basically surrounded by the remains of the, remnants of the Pitcher's property. They carved this out through subdivision a couple years ago, and they've retained ownership of the rest of it, which I believe is open fields and woods. I don't believe there are any structures on the remainder of their property on that side of 9G. To my knowledge, there aren't any.
No, on the other side of 9G, no.
Yeah. So--
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a draft seeker resolution, which I'll read for the board to consider before we close the public hearing. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the proposed action described within the June 5th, 2014, application by Core Group Properties LLC for site plan approval in the matter of a special event venue, the greenhouse at Rhinebeck, on Middle Road at 34 44, 35 44 Pitcher Lane in the ORP district, the application more specifically involving a modified site plan as compositely set forth on a site plan drawing prepared by DF Wheeler, engineers PC, dated September 16th, 2013, and revised April 2nd, 2014, and in architectural plans, SK1, addition to the greenhouse at Rhinebeck, proposed first floor plan dated May 24th, 2014, and P1, prospective one dated March 10th, 2014, prepared by Warren Temple Smith Architects, incorporating response to review comments by the planning board engineer and Dutchess County Health Department in the addition of a deck and accessible restroom facility, and as such superseding the site plan subject to the planning board's resolution of October 21st, 2013. One, upon review of the EAF Part 1 and its own completion of the amnestic EAF Part 2 in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title 6, Part 617.7C-NYCRR, determines the proposed action as described in the application will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issues a negative declaration, determination of non-significance, deemed an environmental impact statement not to be required, and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the full EAF and directs the planning board clerk to file and distribute the full EAF with negative declaration, annotation, and other documentation to the extent pertinent and unlisted action in the manner set forth within the seeker implementing regulations Title 6, Part 617.12-NYCRR, and in accordance with the format of the updated and recently issued seeker form. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Could I hear a second? Any discussion amendments? I'll poll the board. Richard?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Could I hear a resolution to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We will have a resolution of approval for you after-- Okay, our next public hearing. Carroll Marx Blackwood, Grinnell Street, Subdivision Platte, Special Use Permits and Site Plans. Continuation from June 2nd, 2014 of combined public hearing heretofore conducted on application for subdivision platte approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land, and applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125, zoning, to authorize the consolidation of three parcels into a single parcel at 64 Grinnell Street in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Rhine Cliff Overlay Districts, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the town's LWRA, and both the renovation and expansion of the existing dwelling to 4,096 square feet and related site improvements being a type one action under seeker in a matter of pending applications before the ZBA. A couple things I want to mention before we get started here. The ZBA is not going to be acting on the variance for this project until their, trying to remember, it's not going to be at their first meeting, it's going to be, they're going to be acting after our August meeting. So we are not going to be able to take any action on this until our September 15th meeting, which is what we're going to continue this public hearing until. People can speak tonight if they want. If you have something additional to say, the public hearing will be continued and picked up again on September 15th. At this point, we don't know what the ZBA is going to determine to do. If they approve the variance, then we will proceed with this application as it's been presented to us. If they disapprove the variance, then I assume the application will no longer be a valid proposal for the planning board. If they approve a variance of some sort with modification, then the application will have to somehow be addressed, modified, something of that sort. At this point, we don't know. So we're going to be back here on the 15th, and basically pending on what the ZBA does, we'll determine what we can do as a planning board. So if you wish to speak tonight, you certainly can, if you have something to say that we haven't heard before, that would be fine, but as I said, we won't be able to take any action until the ZBA acts, and at this point, I do not know what the ZBA is going to do. So, and we won't know until they do it. They are planning to vote at their second meeting in August, which is August--
20th.
20th?
Second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday, third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday is the 20th.
Will be the 20th of August, and that's when they intend to take action. Okay. So if you don't wish to speak tonight, what I'm going to do is ask the planning board to continue this public hearing to September 15th at 6:35. Yes?
I will speak if you--
Oh, if you wish to speak tonight, you can.
I won't read everything.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Rosenberg, I'm a resident of Rhine Cliff, I've been before you before. I just want to address one thing which has been out there, I'll read this a little bit. The applicant has put forth a plan and has reiterated this through written and oral testimony, that there will be a great gift of an easement on the north lot, as it is now, they're combining it, but it is the north lot. And in exchange for this gift, the south view will, in Mr. Rodenhausen's own words on the last ZBA meeting, be sacrificed, unquote. And Mr. Mensch has said almost the same thing. So what I'm trying to understand is, first off, I don't know, when I get a birthday gift, I don't turn to the person and say, "What do I owe you?" I don't think this is a gift, it's a trade, a quid pro quo, an exchange. They want something for what they're given. So the applicant is asking for substantial area variance, as well as numerous other bonuses in exchange for an amenity of placing an easement on the area that is now the north lot. Mr. Rodenhausen has even written, quote, "The view preserved in perpetuity will be a substantial pedestrian amenity," unquote. I don't see any provision in the town zoning law for this type of incentive zoning. Only the town board has the authority to evaluate the value of an amenity in exchange for an incentive or bonus. New York State Law, Section 261B, makes it very clear, I'll just read a little bit of it, it's three pages long. It says, "The town board shall set forth the procedure by which incentives may be provided to specific lands, such procedure shall describe. The incentives or bonuses which may be granted by the town to the applicant, the community benefits or amenities which may be accepted from the applicant to the town, the criteria for approval, including methods required for determining the adequacy of community amenities to be accepted from the applicant in exchange for a particular bonus or incentive to be granted to the applicant by the town." So I would have to say that any consideration of a so-called gift as an easement in exchange for a bonus would invade the zoning province of the legislative body and would be considered somewhat arbitrary. It doesn't seem like the authority exists outside of the town board to make any such exchange under New York State Law, unless it were in the zoning law, and the only incentive bonusing, bonuses in the zoning law have to do with affordable housing for development, which obviously this has nothing to do with, so that was-- Just briefly, I want to just talk about one other thing which I didn't address in the last meeting. There's 12 points of the Rhine Cliff Overlay objectives that Mr. Rodenhausen already wrote to in the zoning board letter, so since I know that really does pertain to the planning board as much or more so than the zoning board, I thought it was good to address it here. I'm not going to address all 12, and some of them are irrelevant and have nothing to do with this, but a number of them do. I'm just going to, just script to nine and 11. Nine, limit the square footage of new dwellings and expansion of existing ones to prevent oversized out-of-character homes in order to maintain the most desirable characteristics of the hamlet and prevent alteration of the star characteristic of Rhine Cliff. Mr. Rodenhausen, and paraphrasing the last sentence of what he said, "The visible structures will have only slightly more square footage than the current structure." We'll go to number 11. Prevent the construction of large buildings built to replace a portion of or, of all or demolished one, which may be out of scale with surrounding buildings. Mr. Rodenhausen says, paraphrasing the last sentence of what he said, "No large buildings will be created, the underground rooms and connecting ways should not be considered as they are out of sight from the street," unquote. I don't know what kind of zoning this is, I would call it peek-a-boo zoning, because essentially you're saying that if you hide the house from the street, this is what they're stating, if it's hidden from view, then essentially the, you're immune from gross square footage restrictions, which is a kind of novel approach to zoning, but it's not one I see in the zoning code anywhere, so if you take this to a sological conclusion, anytime someone builds a house, they might as well make it 8,000 square feet, put a giant hedge in front of it, and if there's a little piece sticking up, you might as well just count that square footage, because the rest is obstructed. It's not supported in the zoning code, it's a novel approach, it's clever, but it doesn't actually address the zoning code, it tries to work around it. Finally, some questions for the board, which Mr. Broad spoke at the June 2nd meeting, was an issue, indicated the issue of usage variance, and that was at the June 2nd meeting, not resolved. He said that, Mr. Broad said that there would be some question of that to be looked into, was the quote that I recall. And on that same subject of open questions, I wrote a letter, I believe July 7th, regarding how the renovation, as it's being called, and I would call it a recreation or facsimile house. And the reason I say this is pursuant to Section 12562 of the town zoning law, demolition of a house requires a permit, and demolition of a historic house requires something even more substantial than a regular demolition permit. And on, for example, April 7th, at the planning board meeting, Mr. Mensch described his plan this way, and I quote directly from Mr. Mensch, "It will be in essence a new building, there's no way to get around that, we will make it look as much like we imagined it looked when it was built," unquote. Now, is it the planning board's contention that if someone says they're restoring a building, but they're really demolishing it, that that, they don't need a demolition permit? I'm putting this question out there, not that you need to answer it now, but I do feel that there's an issue of a demolition permit which has not been applied for, and I spoke to Beth Cummings at the State Historic Preservation Office, and she said that the Secretary of the Interior has very specific standards for restoration of houses, and that if the planning board were to submit the plans, they could review them, they would do this for free, this is what they do, and would be able to have input as to whether this is actually a restoration or a demolition. And I would implore the planning board to, and I've already written a letter to the zoning enforcement officer, the new zoning enforcement officer, on this matter, to take the state Historic Preservation Officer up on this, because this is, as has been identified, a contributing house to the state historic, to the landmark historic district, and the fact that it was, in many people's eyes, unfavorably renovated in 1997, I realize that, has no bearing on whether it's still a contributing structure to the historic district. That's directly from the State Historic Preservation Officer, and I think you all know that as well. So essentially, that was basically all I had to say at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Yes?
Hello?
Joseph Mareska, I live in Rhine Cliff. And I've been up here--
I've been up here before.
You have to sort of speak into the microphone so that he picks it up on the camera, too.
I've been up here before and have said things very similarly, and as Matt is describing Carolyn's desire to build her house, large, small, or whatever, if it's well done, well, my feeling is, what's so bad about that? The issue to me is that I'm reading in papers, or the local paper, Carolyn's house being described as a large estate, or what she intends to build as a large estate, which really makes me laugh, since the largest estate that I know of is above me, it's the big yellow house, that's probably 6,000 or 7,000 square feet, and I didn't hear anyone getting hysterical about that. But it's certainly not a large estate that she's building, and what it implies in my head is that large estate, wealthy person, money, she can buy anything she wants, and that's not the type of person that Carolyn is, and she's a very quiet person, so I know that hurt her when she sees a project that she feels, as I do, is going to be beneficial visually, you know, aesthetically, perhaps bring more people to come and see our little hamlet, which I'm very proud of, but that's neither here nor there. It paints a friend of mine as something that she really isn't, you know, one of these rich arises, and maybe she is, I have no idea what Carolyn has in her bank account, but I do know that she tries to fit in and be as much of a mensch, pardon, as anyone else that I know. I don't know, that's basically pretty much what I want to say, is that, you know, this is not a huge home that's being built, and as someone with some sort of sense of design, well, to get right down to it, Sally Mazzarella said something the last time we met about the initial idea of keeping the town and the hamlet affordable, and more middle-class, perhaps, if you want to put it that way. And I like the fact that there might be poor, which there certainly are across the street from me, and rich, and middle-class, and all different types of people in the town. That has nothing to do with anything as far as I'm concerned. I remember David often saying that, you know, they want to, they would like to keep rich people out of the community because it's a, there's a fear of it becoming too expensive, and it would price everybody out. And I don't think that's an adequate, an adequate reason for me to oppose this project, because it's part of growth, and I'm sure there, there will be lots of changes made in Rhine Cliff. And as far as Carolyn's historic building, you know, that's like grasping at straws as far as I could see, and again, it's sort of like portraying her building as a huge estate. I don't think we have the room for huge estates, I mean, Kitty Pilgrim's house is pretty big, but I certainly wouldn't call it a mansion. But that's basically it, and thank you. I'm sorry I disagree with so many people here, but that's my feelings. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Yes?
I am George Rodenhausen, and I do represent Carolyn Blackwood. I don't plan to speak at length tonight, and I won't. I endorse your suggestion that this be continued until we find out what the ZBA has decided, but since I was quoted in some respects from the ZBA hearings about things which were relevant to the ZBA, I'll just make a couple comments in response. The issue before the ZBA was about the impact on the community under the five criteria for an area variance that this structure would have. So in saying that the structure itself above ground was an 1,100-square-foot structure, not a mammoth building, that's relevant to the area variance criteria that ZBA has to consider. It's not peek-a-boo zoning. Some of the silliness that's brought into this in opposition, I think unfairly, is attempting to distort the comments made, which are made simply to have a dialogue about what the law requires. So the area variance criteria drove that discussion. When it comes back to the planning board, when it does come back, the area variance issue will have been decided. Assuming it's decided in favor of the applicant, that decision will be binding on this board. Some of those issues are no longer relevant to this board. I think it's a waste of this board's time to bring them out here and have a long discussion. I would only say that the gift of the conservation easement in perpetuity to preserve the open space and the view of the Hudson River is-- space and the view of the Hudson River is a part of the overall package for site plan and special use permit approval. It's being offered by the applicant. No one's requiring it. There's no authority in your law to require it. It's a gift in the sense that it's being offered as part of the package. It could be offered without that, as it once initially was. Now it's offered as a consolidation of three lots with the conservation easement. That's the consideration for site plan approval. And when you consider that as a planning board, as a site plan proposal and special use permit proposal, I think it's quite relevant that part of this proposal is to, exactly as the Rhine Cliff Overlay District says, to enhance the view through this project, to enhance the view of the Hudson River. That's something that's undeniable, and you could characterize it in some silly way, however you want to, but it is a great gift. There is no other property on Grinnell Street that has a view of the river protected in perpetuity. This would be the only one if Mrs. Blackwood goes ahead and makes that gift to the town. I just want to make that clear for the record. Otherwise, I support your comment that this should be continued until September 15, and I would like to respond in more detail to all these comments from Mr. Rosenberg, which I'll do then. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You have something?
One quick comment.
One quick comment?
Very quick. I was just going to say, status quo is that the north lot is visible, and enhancing the view by placing a 75-foot hedge nine feet or higher is not an enhancement of the view. It's an obstruction, and you have to give a variance in order to do it, because four feet is the maximum height. And it is a scenic area of statewide significance with river views that you'll be placing it in front of in direct opposition to the Rhine Cliff objectives and the 12 objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I just want to clarify here, in the Rhine Cliff Overlay District, there are only two actual quantifications that the planning board is bound by. One is the 2,300 square foot for a house, which can be changed by variance. The other is the 35-foot height limit, which a variance could also apply for. All setbacks, all other types of, are, in the Rhine Cliff Overlay District, are at the discretion of the planning board. So while there is a four-foot front hedge limit throughout the town, because this is the overlay district, the town board in its wisdom decided to give the planning board the authority to determine what would be appropriate for any given property at any given spot in there. So if you might want to take that up with the town board, but that's where that stands right now. I should also mention that Lucy Hayden called me last week, and I believe an application has been made to Winnicky about the potential easement. Winnicky has chosen not to act on it at this time. I'm not exactly sure why. She just wanted me to know, and she wanted Michael West, the chairman of the ZBA, to know, that Winnicky has not, at this time, determined whether or not to go forward with that. That doesn't mean they won't. It just means she wanted me to know that at this time, because I guess there was an article in the paper which gave the impression that the easement was already in place, and she just wanted us to know that that has not yet happened, so. Anything else from anyone tonight that can't wait till the 15th? Steve?
Actually, this could work here. So I'll make it. Very quick. It's my understanding, I don't believe there's a four-foot limitation on hedges.
No. Well, it's on fences.
It's on fences, but fences are defined as structures.
That's correct.
So this keeps coming up. There is no such restriction. The other thing I would just briefly comment on is Matt's characterization of the remodeling or restoration. There is nothing left of the original building as it exists, except some studs. The windows have all been replaced and relocated. The doors have all been replaced and relocated. The siding has been replaced. The trim is completely different. Most of it's all pressboard. It was all put on in 1997. The roof has been replaced. There is nothing visible of the original building. So what can we do except try to go back to what it was? We either leave the modern destruction of the building, or we try to improve it. Those are the choices.
Thank you. Everyone else ready to wait till the 15th? Yes.
I just want to say, in the matter.
Sure.
So I don't have to say anything.
Well, you can just identify who you are, if you want, and that you're.
My name is Stefano Ferrari. I live on Route 308 in London.
Okay. Thank you. So we're all set to wait till the 15th of September? Yes?
I'm sorry, Michael. I just had a question. Do you know, like, do you want to have a drawing done from the riverside to see how?
The planning board has voted to have a visual analysis done by an independent expert in that field. We are postponing that until we see what the ZBA does, because we don't wish the applicant to have to go to the expense for something. But if the ZBA turns down the variance, then it really, it's of no value. But the planning board, if this variance is granted, then yes, that will be done.
Thank you.
Yes?
I also have a question. At the June 2 meeting, as there had in previous meetings, there was a question raised about the amount of space in the property that could be used as home occupation. And Mr. Broad, I brought that up in a letter. Mr. Broad brought it up earlier. At the June 2 meeting, there was some discussion about whether that would be, need to be referred to the zoning board.
Yes.
In a letter, I, Mr. Rodenhause responded to that, in his letter to the zoning board, which I think was copied to the planning board, and he indicated that, I believe, the zoning enforcement officer, you, Mr. Turnbull, had, in February, had written something saying to the effect that the only requirement is for an area variance, which he then cited as indication that case closed on the use variance issue. But the discussions of the use variance issue came up after the February letter. So I wondered if you could give some clarification about whether the use variance, where is the status of referring that to the zoning enforcement officer?
Yes, I believe I can. The original plans showed storage, things like that, down in those lower areas. When they lost the, or took away the second story of the garage for an apartment, they have relocated some of the living space, I believe, in the structure that has been proposed for the two properties when they're combined. And there's now some other uses down in the basement areas which weren't there in the original, which I originally responded to. So the ZEO now will be responding to these questions, given there have been some modifications to the site plan. I think, once again, we're all kind of waiting to see what the ZBA does, just to try and save everyone, you know, time and grief. If for some reason, well, I think you'll all know what the ZBA decides, so I don't think you'll, anyone here to announce it to you. Clearly, we are, well, in a minute, we're going to try to continue the public hearing to the 15th. But yes, a number of those issues do have to go to the new zoning enforcement officer. A couple of things were changed, and there are some modifications, potential modifications, and he would have to rule on those before there could be any other variance requirements.
There were several points in his letter.
Yeah.
There were several points in your letter that I advised Michael, and Michael agreed, needed to be considered by the ZEO in terms of interpretation of various zoning provisions. The other gentleman raised a couple of points, too, that I think fall within that same, you know, that same ballpark.
And that would be for the zoning enforcement officer to decide, as opposed to this board. Yes?
I'm curious to see the line of the house of Rhine Cliff. I just, yes, I would put to the community, I don't really know whether or not usage, i.e. a home business, is something we want to put on the agenda as a community, because this is a country of small businesses and entrepreneurs. It's a community of entrepreneurs, and I would question the, so do we want to be going everyone's home and saying, excuse me, are you using that desk or what? I think that it's a curious question, whether or not you have issues with the structure of the building, but to make it a personal, or I think of as a personal opinion on how someone can use their home, whether or not they're running a small business, is a curious question.
Well, it is, except it is covered in the zoning law under Home Occupation 1 and Home Occupation 2, so by law, it does come up as a legitimate concern, just because it is in the zoning law.
I think the point is, if I sit down at my kitchen table and I make a phone call to one of my clients, is that become workspace? So are we going to critique everybody who comes in front of us and say, you can't have more than 500 square feet? I don't think anybody really needs more than 500 square feet. That's a lot of space. She's got storage, I think she said. I mean, I don't think anyone really considered it an issue. I can't imagine she's going to turn the house into a big office.
Probably not, but that's a question the zoning enforcement officer has to rule on. Anyone else tonight? I'm not seeing any hands. Is that correct? Okay. Could I ask the planning board for a motion to continue this public hearing to September 15 at 6:35?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. One way or the other, we'll see on the 15th. Okay. The next item on the agenda is, under public hearing, is Robert Duffy, but we closed the public hearing at our last meeting. We did the negative determination under Seeker. The ZBA, at their last meeting, decided they wanted to do a site visit to Mr. Duffy's property. I had thought they had already done that, but apparently not. So they're scheduling that. I believe they're going to try to vote on the variances for Mr. Duffy at their August 6 meeting, their first Wednesday meeting, which will enable us to then move on to approval on the 15th at our meet, whatever our meeting.
18th.
18th, August 18th, our regular August meeting.
The ZBA should decide on the 16th.
What are they looking for?
I'm sorry?
What are they looking for?
They wanted to do a site visit before they voted on the variances that were before.
Did you just get the whole visual of the placement of the cottage?
I guess, yeah. I thought they'd already done it, but apparently not. So they want to do a site visit. So we will move right along now.
Law resolution, because I thought they were going to go.
Yeah. I thought that they were going to act that night, and I was very surprised when they didn't. But then I found out they hadn't done the site visit. So I have a draft approval resolution for Core Group, which I will read to you. The Town of Rhine Cliff Planning Board hereby acts as follows. On the June 5, 2014, application by Core Group Properties LLC for site plan approval in the matter of a special event venue, the greenhouse at Rhine Beck, on Middle Road at 3544 Pitcher Lane in the ORP District, with the application more specifically involving a modified site plan, as compositely set forth on a site plan drawing prepared by DF Wheeler Engineers PC dated September 16, 2013, and revised to April 2, 2014, and an architectural plans SK1, addition to the greenhouse at Rhine Beck, proposed first-floor plan dated May 24, 2014, NP1 Perspective 1 dated March 10, 2014, prepared by Warren Temple Smith Architects, incorporating response to review comments by the planning board engineer and Dutchess County Health Department, and the addition of a deck and accessible restroom facility, and as such superseding the site plan subject to the planning board's resolution of October 21, 2013, and the proposed action being an unlisted action on action for which a negative declaration, determination, non-significance has heretofore been issued by the planning board. Approves the application for site plan review and approval, authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the modified site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within the next six calendar months. One, submission of site plan drawings in the number and form set required within the Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, or in lesser number, as may be deemed acceptable by the chairman upon consultation with the planning board clerk and the ZEO. Two, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due the Town of Rhine Beck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 101.
125 zoning.
Where? Whoa, what?
Under chapter, under chapter 125 zoning.
125 zoning, yes. Zoning. Three, satisfaction of other outstanding requirements, if any, set forth within the planning board's resolution of October 21, 2013, including but not limited to matters involving agency approvals stated herein of water supply and sanitary sewage arrangements. In taking this action, the planning board determines the above cited documents to have been adequate for its review and consideration of this application, and waives any further data requirements set forth within the Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, which might otherwise be construed to apply to this matter. Could I hear a motion to approve? I'm going to hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I will poll the board. Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Okay. Zipping right along. The next item is, I mean, Darren Davidovich, Agent, Special Use Permit and Site Plan, Initial Presentation of Applications for Special Use Permit and Site Plan Review and Approval, authorized subject to grant of area variances by the ZBA. The conversion of an existing barn to a, I have here, 1,450-square-foot detached accessory apartment on a 4.129-acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 District, planning board and review processing is may be timely under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and Seeker. Art had, as you read in Mark's meeting notes, he had a number of points, a number of things that needed to be.
Point number one, here, I think, in terms of board procedure, there's an application for variance required in this particular case. Has that application been accepted by the ZBA?
I have been informed that it was accepted.
Because the planning board policy is to not move forward in processing an application at the applicant's risk concurrently with the ZBA application, unless the application has first been accepted by the planning board, by the ZBA.
I was informed that it has been accepted. I believe that the square footage is different than what I just read.
That's correct. It's 2,150 square feet, or 2,100, sorry, even square feet.
2,100 square.
2,100.
Okay.
Variance.
And there were the four, other four items. We need an interior floor plan of the proposed accessory detached dwelling, and you have that tonight for us.
I'll present that.
Statement of intended occupancy of the principal dwelling. As you know, in order to have an accessory dwelling, the principal dwelling needs to be occupied by the owner of the property.
Right, we're aware of that.
And proposed exterior elevations of the structure, and I believe that you do have those.
I do, and they were also submitted as part of the application. They should have them in there.
Yeah, those were simply not forwarded to me, or got lost in the electronic transmission. The other thing is, was the, either documentation of design approval by the health department or a copy of the application that's been submitted to the health department for water supply and sanitary sewage.
Right, and I brought that with me tonight. This is that application. It's in process at the health department.
My point in the meeting notes was essentially, if those elements are in place.
We're ready to move forward.
Not necessarily totally satisfactory, but if they're in place for purposes of the planning board's review, then the matter can proceed, you know, can go forward in terms of accepting the application and scheduling hearings, et cetera.
Very good.
Which seems to be in order.
Okay. If you want to tell the planning board what you want to do.
Certainly. So Route 262, Route 308, there are three existing structures on the property. There's a main residence, which is approximately 3,300 square feet. A white house sits fairly close to the road. There's a garage, which is about 1,400 square feet, automobile garage, used for some pool equipment to service the pool, that's also apparently on the property. And there's an existing barn, and the barn is 2,900 square feet on two stories, fairly old, built around the time of the main house, late 1800s, early 1900s, but undergone many, many facelifts along the way. Right now, the majority of the barn is covered in texture 111, so essentially it's covered in plywood. So whatever original siding is there is no longer there. And there's a badly deteriorated tin roof that has just been about to go over the years and needs some maintenance, actually needs some replacement. So the proposal is to, by conversion, change the barn into a detached accessory dwelling with it. Nothing's proposed in terms of additions to the structure itself, so the footprint won't be expanded at all. And in fact, the structure is too large even for purposes of the detached accessory dwelling. So the proposal is, and I'll show you some floor plans, to use the entire first floor of 1,450 square feet, and then to cut away a good portion of the second floor to bring us to a total of 2,100 square feet of habitable area, and create essentially a two-story setting in the living room area of the lower level. So we'd be stripping it away and creating a mezzanine, essentially, and that's how we're going to cut down on the square footage. And nothing else is proposed for that structure. It's not intended to have a garage for cars or any other type of storage. We're really trying to avoid a lot of building code issues with fire separations, things like that. This is strictly a conversion of a barn into a detached accessory dwelling. And as I just gave you, we have submitted to Dutchess County Department of Health for a septic system that would serve exclusively the detached accessory dwelling. We did evaluate tying into the current septic field that serves the house, and we made the determination that, based on the proximity of the structures and fields, it would be a lot easier to put a new septic system in for just the detached accessory dwelling, that being a tubetterie. So the application to the health department. We are currently processing with the zoning board of appeals, mainly because our lot size does not conform to the requirement. When the parcels were on zone, this, like many of the other parcels in this area, no longer conform. We're at 4.1 acres required to survive, so we cannot process this application without the variance to get the lot size in performance, or a nod that the lot size is acceptable for this type of use. And of course, we're going for a variance to. And of course, we're going for a variance to go beyond the allowable 900 square feet for a detached accessory dwelling. And in this case, it's by conversion, so we are, we're using what we have, we're cutting back the square footage to a more reasonable number for the layout that's favorable to my client. And then along the way, the ZBA or the zoning enforcement officer asked us just to correct a few other things. Again, because of lot size, the house is not in compliance with the front yard setback. So he asked us to just talk about that with the ZBA to make sure they're comfortable with the fact that we don't need the now required 100 square, 100-foot setback for the house, which in this case does not apply to the detached accessory dwelling at all, it's just an administrative item. And then we don't need the required lot width, the required frontage, but again, because we're an undersized lot by the result, we don't have the required lot width of 500 feet at the building line, which is a provision in the code. So we're trying to clean all those items up in one fell swoop with the zoning.
Now, who's going to be living in the, in the, in the main house?
My client. So the family would be living in the main house, and the purpose of the detached accessory dwelling is so that her brother, who currently lives in New Jersey, goes Asperger's, can come live and have a private setting here on the creek and be sort of private from the family, but at the same time be on the same property as the family. So it's designed to be set up to, you know, largely orient towards the creek. A lot of windows, windows, doors, that type of thing are oriented towards the creek. And a courtyard for both parking and for recreation is designed to sort of be the buffer between that, the garage and the house, which would be largely for the rest of the family.
Any questions from members of the board? Art, anything else you?
No, I have no problem. With, with the additional information that's been presented, I have no problem with the board's proceeding. The draft resolution applies other than to change the couple of references to 1,450 square feet to 2,100. When you get to those, we'll fill in the date of the, the plans later.
Sure.
And on the top of the, top of page 14 of the notes, not of the resolution, but of the notes, where it says, as submitted to the ZBA, as submitted to the ZBA and accepted for processing on July 16th.
Mm-hmm.
Add that language. And of course, it'll be 6:35 on the 18th.
Yes. All right. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board, on June 26th, 2014. Upon June 26th, 2014, review by the zoning enforcement officer, hereby access follows in the matter of the June 4th, 2014, applications by Irene Dish, David Davidovich, Agent, for a special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, district schedule of use regulations in Article 6, Section 125-6A-E, and related site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed conversion of an existing barn to a 2,100 square foot detached accessory apartment on a 4.129 acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 district, always depicted and/or otherwise described in a site plan and building plan prepared by, and we'll get that, and dated, and we'll get that, and short EAF Part 1, an agricultural data statement in subject of an application for area variances to authorize a detached accessory dwelling unit of 2,100 square feet instead of the maximum 900 square foot otherwise permitted, and two, authorize proposed conversion to occur on a non-complying lot of 4.129 acres instead of on a complying lot of not less than five acres submitted to the ZBA on June 16th, 2014.
ZBAA and accepted for processing on July 16th.
Okay. One, waives the conduct of a separate sketch plan conference and accepts the applications as adequate for commencing review by the planning board, the board's consultants, and the public. Two, classifies the proposed action as an unlisted action under Seeker. Three, schedules a combined public hearing as set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing on the applications for Monday, August 18th, 2014, at 6:35 PM, and directs the clerk to undertake and/or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof in strict accordance with the provisions of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-66 and 125-77. Four, further directs the planning board clerk to circulate the agricultural data statement in the manner described in the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law. Five, delegates who wants to go on a site visit? Sharon. And Jesse. To conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Six, refers the applications to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment in consideration of environmental factors. Seven, refers the applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review and advisory opinion pursuant to the requirements of Section 239 I and M of, L and M of the general municipal law. Eight, requests further technical review of the applications by the town's planning consultant, and without prejudice, requirements for careful consideration by the planning board of any input that arises through the continuing review process as set forth above, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare the working graph as an EAF Part 2 for consideration by the planning board. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Could I hear any discussion amendment, anything like that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. So you'll want to coordinate with Jesse and Sharon on the site visit, and with Joni on getting the noticing done.
Sounds good. Should I arrange that through Joni?
The noticing, yes. The site visit?
Trade numbers.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Okay, that works.
Okay, very good. All right, moving right along. John McGuire Jr., Mark Grominski, Agent, 42 Accret Hook Road, Special Use Permit and Subdivision Plaid. Initial presentation, sketch plan conference concerning applications for special use permit, conventional subdivision, and subdivision plaid approval for authorization of the creation of four residential building lots in an existing house lot from the entirety of a combined 6.216 acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 and neighborhood infill districts, planning for consideration of sketch plan and review and process. As may be timely under Town Code Chapter 125, Chapter 101, subdivision of land and Seeker. This looks awfully familiar. Just don't anybody move now.
Yes, don't move the drawing. While Mark is getting ready to, to begin his presentation, I'm going to just add a couple of things to submission. First, the submission was accompanied as supporting data with a copy of the actual petition for zoning amendment that Mr. McGuire had submitted to the town board. What is in fact more pertinent here is that petition caused the town board to then adopt a local law, which added this particular neighborhood into the, imposed a neighborhood infill overlay district on this particular RC5A district. And through that overlay, the area and bulk regulations that are otherwise applicable to the one-acre zoning now apply to this particular tract of Mr. McGuire's property and some 20 or 30 adjacent, adjacent nearby properties. The second thing that is pertinent is that when the town board considered the zoning overlay, they obviously conducted an environmental review, and that environmental review did take into account the creation of a certain number of additional lots, six or seven that could be created in this area based upon the creation of that neighborhood overlay district. Four of those lots being created here, proposed to be created here through the, through the re-submission of Mr. McGuire's property. I bring that, that history into play to explain a little bit how these lots are reconfigured under what appear to be essentially the equivalent of one-acre zoning requirements, and secondly, to indicate that there are certain overall environmental issues associated with the development here, i.e. external traffic, et cetera, that have already been considered by the town board through the rezoning, which really makes the planning boards consider here, a consideration here really a very site-specific sort of consideration. Mark.
Great introduction.
With that preamble, would you care?
And as, and as you said, we've seen this before, this was, for the couple of people who may not have been on board at that point in time, this project, proposed subdivision in almost the same configuration, was brought by Mr. McGuire and Mr. Grominski to the planning board several months before the zoning, comprehensive zoning amendment occurred, and through that comp, and this was one-acre zoning at that point in time. Through the comprehensive zoning amendment, this, this particular property was rezoned RC5 and not included in the neighborhood infill overlay, unlike Sopasko Lake, which was included in the neighbor, in the, in the neighborhood overlay. So that's the, the correction, if you will, that the town board made through the, through the, through the zoning amendment four years after the initial comprehensive zoning.
After that.
You want to let him talk now? Well, just to add a little bit, so this particular application, oh, and one thing with regard to the local law, it's actually not listed online yet, the adoption of the local law for this zoning.
Trust us, it happened.
It happened, it happened.
If you go online, Tom is still the supervisor to it.
That's correct. Actually. Oh, in someplace, I think.
I went to ECO 360, and the local law is not actually listed on 360 yet.
Probably hasn't been picked up by general code yet, then. I'm trying to think if, yeah.
I will.
Anyway.
I'll just, I'll stop then.
I was present when they approved it.
Right, I knew it was approved. So, so the application in front of this board is very similar to what took place prior to the, prior to the January 2010 adoption of the comprehensive plan and the new zoning. One small addition to that is that that application was for a creation of three lots at a time.
Especially garage.
That John was going to maintain, which is now proposed lot number one, that's where his shop is, was going to keep that as, you know, part of his home, and then, you know, now the proposal is to remove that and to create a single-family residence on that parcel. So this total, this application is four, total of five lots, with frontage on Accret Hook Road and Water Lane. Access is, as I said, off of, off of those two roads. This was actually previously reviewed by the highway department regarding access, but it will, a new application will be made to the highway department for access for the individual lots. They're all by individual private. The water and sewer facilities will also be onsite and eligible. The locations that are shown on these plans are based on previous testing that was done and witnessed by the Dutchess County Department of Health. Since it's been, since time has passed, that will also reoccur, retesting and site visit with the health department will occur for this configuration, and just, just reconfirm the testing results that were yielded back in 2009 and 2010. In addition to that, we'll also, what will, will follow this sketch application are plans and details that are typical to, you know, preliminary subdivision approval for, for this board review, grading, grade inch, and any, any other onsite improvements will also be included under that. So the, tonight's, your presentation and application is just for reconsideration of sketch.
Scooch more than one acre. I see we have that lot number one just under the wire there.
I do.
Thirteen, thirteen thousandths of an acre.
Is a proposed house site going to be shown on lot number one?
Yes, it will.
Okay. So you're going to show a potential removal and a replacement.
Right.
Members of the planning board, any questions? Okay, well, I do have a resolution here to get the ball rolling on all this.
What I've, what I've recommended to the board is that, you know, again, this is not, it's not, not something that was on the project. The board basically endorsed the, endorsed the sketch as being, in being compliant with the, the NI overlay, and accept the application for conventional, for a conventional subdivision in, in the RC5 district. Because the conventional subdivision is a special permit and not a permitted use. And further process the application as at least the beginnings of, for preliminary plat consideration, with the understanding that there is some additional engineering data that needs to be provided before the board can act on the preliminary plat. And Mark clearly enumerated what that information is. It's basically the stormwater compliance information and a copy of the permit to DEC, not to DEC, but to the health department, copy of the application to the health department, and a touching of the base and getting input from the town highway superintendent as to the, as to the driveway locations.
And the actual justification, I think, for the special use permit being authorized is the town actually changing the law to bring this part of the neighborhood infill overlay district where they intended this to happen.
Yep.
So it's actually the intent of the town board that this subdivision of this sort take place as opposed to a cluster or something else.
Right, with this assertion, it did stand subdivision application.
Right.
A special permit application.
All of which is addressed in the, in the draft, again, the draft procedural resolution, and to get the ball rolling, this would be scheduled for, for a public hearing at your next meeting, for preliminary. Again, this is a major subdivision, so this is a two-step process.
So, we'll see how this goes this time. Town of Reinbeck Planning Board, upon both review by the zoning enforcement.
Michael, if I, just a minute, okay. Have the, there's a contingency built into this resolution which may, may or may not still apply. Have the fees all been paid and the escrow deposits made?
Paid all the fees. I wonder if there's one second.
Is John here?
No. An application actually has not been the full.
Okay, okay, so, so the contingency stays in the resolution?
Not notified.
Yeah, the contingency in the resolution is that the fees and the escrow just have to be brought up to, to speed, and that the contingency is, the public notice doesn't get published until that matter's taken care of.
You'll be getting a bill, John.
Yeah. Okay, I haven't heard anything.
You, you will.
I have something.
Yeah, whatever.
All right, here we go. Town of Reinbeck Planning Board, upon both review by the zoning enforcement officer and sketch plan review by this board, hereby access follows on the July 7th, 2014, applications by John McGuire Jr., Mark Grominski, Agent, for special use permit, conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, and for subdivision plaid approval under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land, in the matter of the proposed creation of four residential building lots in an existing house lot from the entirety of a combined 6.216 acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 district and neighborhood infill overlay districts, always depicted in a sketch plan entitled McGuire Major Subdivision and Lot Line Alteration, prepared by Mark R. Grominski, PE and LS, and dated July 7th, 2014, and otherwise described within a site resource analysis assessment and full EAF Part 1, both as also prepared by Mr. Grominski. One, accepts the above cited applications for special use permit, conventional subdivision, and subdivision plaid approval accompanied by the underlying site resource analysis assessment as adequate for commencing sketch plan preliminary plat approval by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public contingent upon the applicant's payment of all required fees and posting of required escrow deposits in the matters of the requested consideration of special use permit and both sketch plan and preliminary plat by the planning board. Two, classifies the application as a major five-lot conventional subdivision, and the proposed action is an unlisted action under Seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is neither required nor to be conducted. Three, contingent upon satisfaction of the above stated contingency, schedules a combined public hearing as set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing on the applications for Monday, August 18th, 2014, at 6:40, I think.
Yeah.
All righty. PM, directs the clerk to undertake otherwise cause of noticing thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land, Section 101-4.4D1, and Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-66. Delegates planning board members, who wants to go? Okay, I'll go. Who wants to go with me? Okay, Richard and I'll go. To conduct a field visit to the proposed subdivision and report their observations at the public hearing. If I remember to do this one, call me, so it's like not, you know, fight and support the town board meeting, planning board meeting. Refers the applications to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment. Requests further technical review of the applications by the town's planning consultant and the planning board engineer. The above notwithstanding advises the applicant neither completion of preliminary plat approval, grant of the requested special use permit, nor issuance of a determination of significance under Seeker will not occur until A, a more detailed engineering plan is submitted, including both required topographic data and stormwater management measures, B, proposed driveway access locations have been reviewed and approved by the town highway superintendent, and three, a copy of a full submission made to the Dutchess County Health Department for approval of onsite water supply and sanitary sewage arrangements is provided to the planning board. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Thank you.
Mark, I'd recommend that you reach out directly to Ray for, for the planning board, and therefore be able to explain to him the status of the application.
Okay. According to my, I don't think we have anything else to do tonight, except clear my throat.
I will not be here on the August 18th.
Okay, anyone else not think they won't be here on the 18th of August? Okay, looks like we have a quorum. Since Woody is not. Since Woody is not here, who wishes the honor?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Thank you, we standard adjourned at 7:40. What?
Didn't Woody come?
No, Woody's, he told me that he wouldn't be able to make it tonight.